This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, um, you want me to go through line by line or you just wanted to do questions?
Well, I don't think we need to go line by line. I can see what's before us. Do we have questions?
Some of the highlights I have, I could hit that. You'll see that I spoke to the sheriff about Code Red. And because we didn't get the sign up that we expected, we're not getting the benefit that we expected. So we decided that we would agree to drop the Code Red. So I approached Brandon because I mean, my budget would grow that much and more. So we saved $6,000 out of the budget right there. The other big thing was if we go down to the search and rescue, we had agreed last year to put portable radios on the budget this year. And they decided that they would drop that $30,000 to $12,000 in order to accommodate their request for two of the Gay Creek Park trade-in deep snow slits. Because they're snowmobiles starting back and they're not deep snow. What they have is to go with some of that not to go here. This year they got caught not being able to get out there when those people were lost off trail. So they decided that it would be a, well, they've been looking at it, as Bob knows, for a couple of years. We just want to get it in the budget. So they put that in the budget later on in capital assets for $18,000. My communications, I just got notified from Gennpro that two, two of the generators are in need of substantial work. I wouldn't call it major, but we've got some whale leaks on the portable generator in Whitewood. And we've got some, some work we need to do on the generator on the Whitewood tower. That's an older one, probably in the next three to four years, we're probably going to have to replace it. But we're trying to.
To run on propane?
Yeah, they all do. They all run, except for the, the portable in Whitewood is on water. It's, it's quite large. You can run a shelter like Whitewood School if we have, we have to get electrician to hook it up. But it's a portable unit that runs on diesel. And we run that every six months and then we have a yearly check done by Gennpro. They, they check all of our generators once a year, usually eh, late August, early September, before the winter gets here so they can get up there because some of them you can't get to. Whitewood Tower is one of them. So, um, not much other big change. Um, most of it is from costs that are going up, as you know. And all in all, I think there, I had a miscalculated. I think the total budget without the wages between search and rescue and EM was $3,000 plus overall. But if I may, you have emergency travel there. That's one up looks to me like $3,000. I, I go back and look at the 21, we got the whole spend there that we use in all the categories there. This is 9,500, that's a $3,000 increase in budget for that item. Yeah, and Richard, I think most of that you agree is due to the fact that Barbara's new. And I have to, she's right now in Pierre at a week-long training. Trying to get her up to speed, but can't do it all at once. We just have to do it whenever those classes come available. So that's, that's part of. Yeah, so is she gonna use all that going back to Pierre or you go to other places? I don't, I don't like to go out of state. Most of them will be in the state. A lot of times they only offer it once a year and you gotta go wherever it is. And sometimes that soup balls, sometimes if it's closer. Been able to arrange for one class to be held here since then, since we've budgeted. So that will cut down on that as well. I'd rather host it here than travel, but we can't always do that either.
Randy?
Does that include that travel item? Does that include your vehicle, gas and everything too? Or is that just training?
EM vehicles at the top for $3,000 of my list anyway. That's 42500.
Yep.
That's $3,000 just vehicle alone.
So this $11,000 is just for travel training?
Yes.
Then if you go down to 4910, the $31,000, what is that for? Search and rescue?
The $31 total is for search and rescue.
What is that for?
Well, we start out with a, they have a line for safety equipment of $3,000. Local training at the Y is $3,500. Both of those are the same as last year. Their fuel is $3,000 for their meeting room and organization's $500. The big one is that replacing repair equipment for $12,000. Those are portable radios.
That's not included in the $18,000 above that under 290?
No, that's mine. So to, to continue, the $7,000 is building and maintenance. They do all their own building maintenance. A lot of it they gotta hire. We don't have that through our county maintenance.
So the $49,000 under that 910 was because we did some maintenance on the building last year?
For last year, I'm not looking at last year, but last year we had the mobile radios. That was a big item for last year.
But that's under communication. This is under search and rescue. Last year my budget was 49. We've only spent 10.
Yeah.
We're halfway through.
Yeah. And the year before, we had that big project on the backside of them.
Right.
And they've got some damage on the west side of the building. I think we're gonna have to get after it. But another thing that we're doing, Randy, is they're going by right now with that developer. They're putting in the sewer line. And Mike talked to me about, do we want to put a T into that line? Just in case we want to hook our sewer into there. Do we want to put that in now rather than dig it up later? I said, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have to pay for that because right now our septic system is working out there. Who knows, you know? So if we, if we decide to hook up to that sewer line, we've already got the T there and we can go back, open it up and hook in.
$35,000 was budgeted for repair, replace, repair, major equipment last year.
Major equipment.
Under search and rescue?
That would include.
Under, under 910?
Radio.
Okay, so the $10,000 that we spent 23, that's through what month?
See, I don't know. There's been an explanation to the board. When we start, when I started before I was here, they had low-band radios. They used that for everything. Low-band kinda went by the side. They use analog radios. And they use, when the state came in and did the digital, Governor Janko gave every fire department, every emergency service, mobile radios and portable radios, covered the state. Well, now we've transitioned to the point where they go into the P25. And some of these radios, they might be only five years old or not compatible with that P25. Now, I've taken a different stance with my search and rescue. We will do the P25 for the mobile for each vehicle. And we will put one portable P25 in each vehicle. But their radios that they work out in the field with, up to, I think, 35 members we are now, we're using the older radios because they're still good. We just put them on analog. We just have them reprogrammed just for analog. And I'm using some of the radios that the sheriff department is turning in that they can't use because it's not P25. I'll take them, have them reprogrammed and use them for the search and rescue, like the side-by-sides, stuff like that, or out the field that are pretty good. And we're not losing anything because sheriffs are, have already given up. They'll, they'll throw them away if I don't use them. And I can get some use out of them. I could probably be here nine years on, only on the analog. So the question is, from the search and rescue, okay, so we only have an analog radio. How do we, how do we get a hold of that highway patrolman over there? And so you call the dispatch and have them, you talk to the highway patrolman. Highway patrolman talks back to dispatch and back to them. We can do it. It's not as easy, but it can be done. And so that way we save thousands of dollars. Because I just don't see the use of a member carrying a radio that costs that much money when you don't use on the digital side that often.
Further questions?
One thing on the safety program, there are about $800 over what's been spent this past year. We, we're seeing the hospital charge more for the results that are getting in. And we could raise our employees, you know, we could even make it so the employees have paper on that. But right now we're trying to get as many of them as we can through that safety program. We've had some pretty good results. You talked about the major equipment overhead of $35,000. Yeah. Yeah. Code Red. And you know, that's, that's something that we're gonna have to, and Randy's part of that group in Pierre, and I don't know if you know it, Randy, but I was invited to go down and speak. That's something that we're gonna have to talk about in the future for equipment for the search and rescue. Because when I got in here, we were able to apply for the Title III grants. And they bought the two major pickups that are there. And the big box that's on that other one, that's transferable. Three snowmobiles and two four-wheelers and a trailer. Well, those trailers and those kind of items, the box, they'll last into the future. But those two major four-wheel drive pickups, even though they don't have a lot of miles on them, they start showing with a turbo going out or something like that where it gets really expensive. And so we don't need it right now, but that's something that we're gonna have to look at in the future. How do we do that?
Any further questions? Well, that's all I have. Thanks. I just wanted to, we got a couple of minutes. I wanna, I guess while I was, missed the last meeting, there was discussion held on the Hawk truck. And I don't know if any of you have been around it. I have since the day we got it. The governor gave it to us. And it's, it's a pretty amazing piece of equipment. And if you've never been up close to it or know anything about it, it would, we should probably set a time to actually sit there and look at it. It's an amazing piece of equipment that, what distance will that water cannon shoot that water ball?
Yeah.
Looks like an eighth of a mile, you know, but.
No, it's, it's probably three hundred.
Anyway, it does some pretty amazing things to be used as a water tender. And it saves some structures in our community over the years. And Deadwood's been gracious enough to house it for us. I heard there was some possible discussion of maybe giving it to Deadwood. And I think the county should retain ownership of it because it was given to us by the governor. It's been a huge asset for our community and it's $57,000 a head. It makes good money when it goes out on a big fire. And so it's never, it's never cost us anything. And it'll need some future repairs, I'm sure. But my personal opinion of that truck is I'd like to see, but I'd like to see us keep ownership of it because it is a fine piece of equipment.
I don't, I just have trouble figuring out why we keep it. It's been 20 years. I was here also.
Yeah.
It is amazing. But Deadwood's been, been running it, managing it. Why, why do we have one piece of fire equipment on us when we have a county fire department? Why not give it to the state or?
Well, if it was costing us money, I would, I would understand that, but it's not. It stays ahead of schedule and there's really, in my eyes, there's no reason for us to get rid of it.
And one of the things that I, that's a good point, Brandon, because I look at the same thing. I look at that and say, I answer people by saying, county's not in the fire business. And that's the last piece of equipment we have. And talking to Deadwood this last winter, when we needed lots of water at Sharran Crossing, of course, everybody brought what they could. Deadwood, Deadwood actually sent the Hawk rather than their regular tender because that way they were able to leave engine, a tender in town while they took that one out of town. And I'll, I'll be honest with you, I don't care if Deadwood has it, but I don't know if Deadwood will take it. I would hate to have that leave this county. It's been to every fire district in this county, plus Buick County, Neat County, Fall River, Pennington. And that truck was built on a brand-new military chassis. It wasn't a used military. It was brand-new. And it, it will last, the normal life of a fire engine is probably 20 years. Some little companies, they, they keep stretching it out because they don't have a choice. I have no doubt that the Hawk would last 35 years, 30 to 35 years with, with the use that it gets and the way it was built. Now, I did hear one question about the chain that came up. And it does have the expandable tires that you can deflate the air. You can inflate the air. And that traction is for dirt, sand and marsh. When you start putting that onto very icy roads, that's where the chains are leaving home. Now, if, if that were to be the case, those big tires are kinda, kinda dangerous on ice. And there's, there's not a fire engine that I know of in Lawrence County that doesn't have chains or the automatic chain, which it wouldn't work down there because they're not big enough. The automatic chains has a whorer underneath that throws the chains in front of the tires as you drive. Oh, I wonder if, I've seen. And those are, those are very expensive.
Well, I've never seen anybody, I've never seen anybody competent throw chains on a four-wheel drive pickup on all four. That's a six-wheel drive if I'm not mistaken.
It is. And it is, it has.
Well, yeah, yeah, it is.
They have the ability, I mean, they have the people. We used to do it in Spearfish whenever we'd get so deep for the snow or the ice. But yeah, you have to be, you have to be trained to do that.
I saw one guy, one of them old Dodge Power Wagons had chains on all four. And that was quite the adventure watching him drive that. Randy?
So Brenda, we have the Lead Fire Protection District. Does that include Deadwood? So that's separate distinct? And they have wildfire response in their structure?
Well, they.
They just renewed their contract for five years.
They ended up keeping.
So beyond Deadwood, is this, is this something that we should talk to wildfire about? To see, to see what their position is on it? Because it seems like that would be an appropriate place to have a vehicle like this.
Why, why do you have the desire to get rid of it? That, that I don't understand. I just, I, I, like I, like I commented earlier, if this vehicle was costing us money, which it's not, I guess, what's your reasoning?
Well, I, not necessarily get rid of it. My point is, if we looked at 20 years ago when we got the vehicle, what's changed? We have Lead Fire Protection District. Now we have a contract with wildfire in Lead. So is there any rearrangement that we need to do? Because things change over time. So that's been the biggest, the biggest change that we've seen in our county is we have the Lead Fire District and the rural Spearfish Fire District now in place that we didn't have those when we got this piece of equipment.
We also had a bunch of other county-owned fire vehicles that were then loaned to different, for all these different areas, which we have.
And my point is, do we want to house it in Deadwood continually or do we want to put it in Lead? I'm just saying those are the things that have changed.
In my mind, Lead, uh, Deadwood is, they've been gracious enough to house it, take care of it. It's kind of centrally located. I've seen that truck respond to many different communities, you know?
Have they said anything about not, have they said anything about not housing it? Said anything to that?
No, I don't, I think they're happy with it.
Well, no, they, they liked the agreement that they even put their maintenance guy on it. And they don't charge us hours, they charge us carts. But another thing up at Lead right now, they just got two new trucks. They're gonna have to get rid of something to fit them in the barn.
Anyway, I just, I just wanted to bring my thoughts up on it. I, as you said, Brendan, you and I were here when it showed up and it's just, it's.
Don't misinterpret my discussion. It's just looking at the change since we've seen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Anyway, I just wanted to voice my opinion.
When they got out to, when I got out to Sharran Crossing, they were going really slow. They, they know what that truck, how heavy it is. And they had a little trouble getting back up that hill. And they didn't feel safe. That's the only thing.
Okay.
I think the requirement was when we got it, we had to keep it 20 years.
Yeah.
And so the 20 years is here. That's why I was thinking.
That's why we have one question when you were there.
There's one, just like it in Hot Springs, Hill City.
Right.
And I gotta tell you that our contract is for $110 an hour. Hill City's contract with the state is for $65.
Well, it should be more than.
That's because.
Two hundred, two hundred and fifty.
Off on that one. Do we have any further questions from folks?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you. Food is here too.
Oh, wait, sorry, did I interrupt you?
Food is.
Oh, it is. Randy? I donated a refrigerator to her too.
Let's, let's take care of Oakley. He's online. That'll break the lunch.
Oakley?
Yes, ma'am. How are y'all this morning?
Good.
Which number are?
Thank you. 611.
All right, gentlemen, we were there last, last night. Do you have questions for the gentleman?
Morning, Oakley.
Good morning. Um, Bruce and I talked with Oakley after the budget hearing on July 12th. And Oakley took the time to visit with us and explain what the actual $11,200 was as far as Michelle is concerned. And after that, we asked him if he would come in and actually explain that to the board because we thought he could do a much better job explaining it than, than Bruce and I. So.
The discussion was, in our last meeting, not to budget the full 11, too.
Right.
But to keep it where it was. Wasn't that it?
We moved it back to $7,300. There was discussion about it being for health insurance.
So this phone call is, is about that item?
That is correct. Yeah, not the Buick County stuff, just the, the contract with the state.
Kay, Oakley, you have the floor.
Yeah, sure. So as y'all are probably well aware, you know, we hire someone like Michelle May to be based in Buick and Lawrence Counties to provide the 4H program to young people in the counties. And in exchange for that service, we ask the county to enter into a cost share agreement with us. And that is what that figure is that was presented to you all. That's that $11,200. So that covers Michelle May, a portion of her salary and benefits to be based there to serve Lawrence County and provide 4H programs in Lawrence County. That's the $30,000 foot view of what that is. I'm happy to go into more particulars or answer any questions about it that you all, you all may have.
I think the one thing was just insurance on that, the seven or eight thousand dollars. And that was a couple thousand dollars borrowed in the past, it seems to me like, if I remember right.
Sure, yeah. So in terms of insurance benefits and all that, on our side, we don't break that down. So the $11,200, the cost share, that is, a part of that goes to salary. A part of that goes towards the benefits package that state employees receive. And so we don't really break that out and say, here's what is going towards this, here's what's going towards that. Total cost for YPA or for someone like Michelle runs the state of South Dakota somewhere between $60,000 and $80,000 a year, depending on how long they've been in the system and all of that fun stuff. And so that cost share total is $22,400. And Buick and Lawrence's situation, since both counties split, Michelle, that's why you're seeing the $11,200. So you're paying for half of that cost share. Buick County pays for the other half. In terms of why a significant jump, and it is, from what the county paid last year, it's a $4,151.31 jump. The rationale on that is, and if any of you have been on the board for very long, you know this better than I, both counties worked out a deal with SDSU extension to where they were only paying 75% of the true cost. And so we had this cost share amount, let's say for easy math, it was gonna be $100 to all counties in the state of South Dakota. Both Buick and Lawrence Counties had it worked out to where they would only be paying $75, whereas every other county in the state would be paying the $100. I, I don't know what conversation led to that. I will also say on our side, someone before me or maybe someone else, their math was not mathing right because we had gotten to a point of what the county paid this, for this current 4H year, this current fiscal year, is not quite 75%. It ended up being 66, 67, right around in there. So that is another reason why it's a little bit more of a jump. On our side of life with extension, and I'm sure you all can relate to this, with inflation, with rising cost of materials and all that stuff, we've had to go back and reevaluate. Is that 75% level for both Buick and Lawrence County, is that sustainable? And so that's really what's brought this conversation up on our end. So we are requesting that both the counties pay the full 100% of that cost share amount. Michelle may have to correct me. My understanding is Buick County has already approved that on their side.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions for the gentleman? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Oakley.
Okay, I'm happy. Yeah, I'm happy to stay on and answer any other questions.
No, I think we're okay. We're okay.
Well, thank y'all for having us.
All right, we're gonna take a 15-minute break and eat our lunch.
Oh, Mike, I'm mute for now.
Oh, Mike, I'm mute for now.
Okay.
One second, please.
All right. Do something before we go to the next part. This report and clarification, I believe the last time, two out of, or three out of the four of us decided to reduce the request from four H for the eleven, eleven two hundred on that line item back at the seventy-three, I would make the motion then to increase it to eleven two. Can I do such a thing or do they have to, well, we didn't actually vote on it, we just did.
Yeah, you just did the three three vote, so you just, or do you want to increase it back to eleven two?
No, I don't.
No?
Yeah, I, I do.
No, well, I can move it back.
Yeah, got, got two, two yeses.
I guess I'm not getting a motion.
It's kind of just a consensus at this point.
Yeah, I'm eleven two.
Move that back to eleven two.
Sorry.
Well, we need, need to hear about all those things anyway.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, I've done that, so thank you.
I just, just struggle with us subsidizing state employees.
Chairman, following up on discussions last meeting, I decided, I think, to come and talk to you about, we call that county health nurse, so here's what.
It's four twenty-two?
Four twenty-two, yep.
And just, can we summarize what we did last, at our last meeting on that? Before we get started? We had a, didn't we have a change there?
Nope, we did not, we, we just asked for you to come and explain what, what the program provides.
What the Department of Health is doing for you? Um, yeah, nothing, while there's big changes going on right now, just in our organizational piece. So Denise Rosenberger retired, so she was a long time community health nurse, like thirty years, long time. And so she retired, so she's been gone essentially all of twenty twenty-three. Our new hire is Brittany Limmel, you might recognize the name, she's a faith girl. So she's our new community health nurse now, she's just completed her training, all of her orientation and getting started. Right about the time that some decisions were made for reorg, for reorganization. I'm sure you're aware that we've had a move over to Spearfish. We were sub-recipient over there under Monument for the rental place, you know, across from the Dorset. The state has now opened the Atlas One Stop, which is the old premiere, so that Atlas building at the Spearfish Economic Core Development Corp pass. And so we have moved in there, so it's been, it's been the desire of the state to try to consolidate state agencies into a one-stop concept, if you will. We have that in Rapid City now, so we have the Rapid City One Stop, and essentially what happens is all of the state agencies, so Department of Social Services, Department of Health, Danner, Labor, Re, you know, everybody, Revenue.
DMV going in there?
Pardon?
DMV going in there too then?
Yes, yep, yep, and the same way over at the Atlas to Spearfish also, they're over there.
There's a bunch from the nature driver place.
Yep, yeah, everything is underneath, so we have a new space, not that we were ever really incredibly disappointed, but that was a fairly antiquated building. We'd had a number of roof leaks in there, you know, those kinds of things like that, so. You know, we have a little different setup in Lawrence County and have had for my tenure, which is nearly thirty years now compared to, say, Meet Counties, Buick Counties, and that kind of a thing, in the, in the sense that, you know, a long, long time ago, you know, we had some issues with the county employee, that's usually how it goes, it's kind of a contractual and a cooperative agreement between the counties, where the county provides clerical support, and they also provide a place to do business. A long time ago, you guys, a long time ago, Lawrence County said, listen, how about you guys get your own employees and find your own place to live and do work, you know, and then tell us what we need to do to, you know, to help out, to stay, you know, in similar ground as we are in Meet County and Buick County and that, so. For example, in Buick County, they pay the rent for where, where we're housed over there, and they provide clerical support, and then they have that contractual agreement for those nursing hours. Here in Lawrence County, just to refresh you guys, I mean, it's, you guys just pay one bill, you have no, no county employee responsibility. What happens in Lauren, in Buick County, for example, is there's a separate contractual agreement and cooperative agreement with the county in our WIC program, being that WIC is a federally funded program, it wouldn't be fair for the county to pay for that, and so they get reimbursed on a per-participant rate, so depending on the number of participants that are, that are participating in WIC in Buick County, then they get a quarterly check back from the state to reimburse them for all of the WIC work that gets done by their county employee. So we don't have anything like that going on because you guys don't have a county employee involved. So does keep things a little cleaner, without a doubt. So we have recently moved in over there, so we've been there for about a month now. And we have some growing pains, of course, you know, clients finding us, it's, you know, it's not the most ideal of locations, if you will, for a lot of folks, but it's part of the process, you know. Sioux Falls is doing the same thing, of course, trying to find, you know, they're, they're way out of town, they're headed out towards, you know, Outpost Brandon, where that spirit, where that Sioux Falls One Stop is, you know, but listen, I mean, you can't, you gotta go today because Sioux Falls is urban sprawl, I mean, it's crazy, I mean, you're getting farther and farther and farther away every day, and that's gonna be, I mean, that's a five hundred thousand square foot facility two, three times bigger than the size of the one that we just moved into in Rapid City. So that's what's been, that's what's been going on. Part of our reorganizational piece that we're, that we're in its infancy right now is to more or less separate WIC staff from our general community health nursing staff. So the main service that we provide has everything to do with maternal, maternal child health. So women of in, of childbearing age, and then kids, especially kids under the age of eighteen. Our WIC program serves children under the age of five, we are hoping for a federal change in that real soon, that would expand that age to six years of age. It was always the idea that, well, those kids are headed to kindergarten, and they could be part of the school lunch program, so we could ensure that they would get a nice healthy meal, you know what I mean, at least one every day, well, we're seeing a change in that, we're seeing kids not going to kindergarten a lot until they're six years of age, those kinds of things, and so expanding that WIC program to the age of six is gonna be something that I hope happens, hope happens here real soon. So anyways, we got that WIC program, that still continues to be the carrot, if you will, for the most part. DSS is, is a great referral, so we have a lot of folks, you know, that head to DSS to look for Medicaid help, especially for their pregnancies, and then they get referred to us, and so then we get them on, and then hopefully we keep their kids up until the age, age five. The breastfeeding, huge proponents of that, obviously that's the healthiest choice, but we provide formula. And that's, you know, I mean, if you've ever, if you've got any grandchildren or that, I mean, you go see what a cap costs for a can of formula is nowadays, it's it's crazy, and especially with the formula shortage that we just have now drug our way out of. That formula is a big, big deal. And then the pregnancy care program, so we're up in pregnancy care services, that's in, that's in a hard steadfast cooperative agreement with DSS, obviously it doesn't take much to have a million dollar baby nowadays, and so we're doing everything we can for our pregnant women, especially those who are on Medicaid, in the low income brackets, to make sure that we have the best outcomes for ill pregnancies to avoid, you know, these million dollar babies, so. Well, listen, we're following them, you know, anywhere from every week to just once a month, or maybe sometimes we have them on just a pregnancy health review where we're seeing them at their need and at their appointments, checking on their weight, checking on their blood pressures, gestational diabetes, those kinds of things like that. Along with that comes all of our safe sleep stuff, been some considerable studies over the years on infant mortality. Lawrence County does a pretty good job, some of our neighbors not so good in infant mortality piece, so we're doing a lot of safe sleep education and providing a safe sleep tools, pack and plays, bassinets, that kind of thing like that, all free of charge to those individuals who identify as, as needing a safe sleep. Not everybody, you know, has a, gets a, you know, a baby shower nowadays, where they get a car seat, where they get, you know, a pack and play, or a bassinet, or a crib, or those kinds of things, and so we're able to fill those gaps all the time. Immunizations is a big deal still, you got your school, all of your required immunizations for school entry, so we're actually getting pretty busy right now as those kids are headed to school to make sure they meet all of those requirements. There's been a number of those added over the last three or four years for tetanus and diphtheria and pertussis in those fifth and sixth graders, that requirement, of course, all this stuff for first time school entry, you know, the measles and mumps, varicella, chikbox, all that kind of stuff, so, doing all of that, doing car seats, so we're taking on that now in Lawrence County. We'd always done it up here in Deadwood, but the fire department and, had, had been doing it over in, in Spearfish, and now they are not doing it anymore. So we'll be taking on that role, we need to make sure that we, we have an outlet to provide car seats to those folks that need one, that again, don't have any luck. Listen, they, they don't get to take their baby home, you know, if they don't have a safe trip, leaving the hospital, so we're making sure that happens. Yeah, and just a variety of, you know, any of the other health stuff that goes on, so we're really looking to make a change. What's gonna happen is we'll have our nurse, our, our WIC specific staff, which will be our dietitians, our nutrition educators, and our WIC public health assistants, who are some specially trained care professionals, if you will, to do WIC specific stuff. What's typically been going on is that staff person was a jack of all trades, so that community health nurse needed to know WIC, and you didn't know all those nuances and all that education, and then the same way on the nursing piece, on the given the immunizations, the safe sleep, all of the pregnancy care stuff, all of that. And so we're looking to separate that out, so we have more of a specialized thing like what's been going on mainly with, you know, your healthcare, I mean, if you go to the, you go to your GP and they see something on your face, that's, I mean, you're immediately headed to the dermatologist. So we're gonna take our nurses and have our nurses do nursing stuff, and then have our nutrition staff do nutrition stuff. So that's what we're headed for right now, and we're, and we're, we're neck deep in that transition right now.
Any questions for me?
I have some. So in Spearfish, how many staff members?
In Spearfish, we have, counting the Bright Start staff right now, we'll have four, we have a vacancy, Paulette McDonald, who's a long time secretary, if you will, and she's recently retired, and so we'll be filling that position.
So five.
So, well, four, counting that position. Yep, yep.
And so which one of these is our county health nurse?
Brittany Limmel is, will be staying on the community health nursing side.
And do, do the cities subsidize you?
They do not.
And WIC, you get money back from the feds?
WIC is a federally funded program.
And how much of this budget in here is for WIC?
Of your budget?
Yep.
Zero.
Okay, and then the pregnancy care programs, is that under WIC?
It is not.
Is it federally funded?
There is some matching dollars in the MCH grant, that is more or less fifty fifty, forty eight fifty two, that they provide money to, and then the rest of it comes from the county, from the state that.
And so when you give vaccinations in the schools, do you get reimbursed from insurance carriers?
It depends on the vaccination, so if we happen to go into the school and help the school nurses out for things like the tetanus, the theory, uh, those required school immunizations and that, depending on how they go, there's a, there's a vaccines for children, which provides the vaccine for free, and then we have an administrative cost, if we can bill those to Medicaid or a private insurance, we do, and if not, then we waive those administrative fees.
So when you come in and give vaccines at the county, you, you get reimbursed from our insurance?
Yes, yep, that's what's, that's what's been going, that's the, that's the way I think it probably needs to go, as opposed to you guys paying for flu vaccine like you have in the past and have us come do it, I, it doesn't really make any sense for you guys to pay the insurance for your employees and then buy the vaccine that they would be getting because they have insurance.
I'm in the pharmaceutical, pharmaceutical business, I have an account with, uh, whatever.
With GSK.
So, so doctor, doctor out, I have a question for you.
They write scripts.
Do you?
Two stories, I actually have an account with GSK.
Yeah.
Statutorily, do we have to fund this program?
Um, regular checkered list, I don't know the answer to that.
If we're gonna go down that road in the healthcare industry, I don't know if I'm gonna be in the boat, you know?
Well, well, Brenda looks at that, so, so historically, they come, help, first, come to do our, our, our flu clinic, they have the many, last many years, Denise and company, and so then for the county employees that have health insurance, our health insurance just gets filled, and it's gonna be very similar now, so a couple of years ago, I finally worked on, I got hepatitis shots, and so I think we had kind of a special deal, I think, basically. I don't know, we were being billed quite what it was, so now, like, as you just described, if I will get hepatitis shot now, if I have county insurance, we'll try to bill our insurance or whoever's insurance, and then if it's not available, then I suppose the county would pay the, the, the difference, is that fair?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's fair, I mean, most of those, most of the insurance companies, you know, they fought it with the law of care, with the Affordable Care Act for quite a while, they kind of fought that piece, but they should all have universal coverage of per immunizations, for, for needed immunizations. And so, yeah, that would be, that would be accurate, and I think you guys purchasing, you know, we set those accounts up, I mean, and like you said, I mean, we're talking twenty years now, and a lot of those are grandfathered in, and then GSK and Merck don't particularly do that with anybody anymore unless there happened to be fire or ambulance folks and that kind of a thing, so like your city sanitation workers, would, would make sense, you know, it's, it's recommended that they would get hep A, get hep B, that kind of a thing, so you guys have been purchasing that, and then we've been giving it.
Storing it.
Yeah, we've been storing it.
I'm not even sure what I could actually buy if I wanted to.
It's scary.
Yeah, right, I don't know, I probably have a whole catalog.
Do you, do you get any revenue from the school districts subsidies?
We do not, no.
Okay, so you have four employees, so sixty-four thousand dollars doesn't cover those employees, where's your other revenue come from?
General funds from that MCH grant.
General funds, explain that.
Well, the gen, the general funds, the state general funds, right, the state general funds that are allocated to the Department of Health.
And so those four employees, is only one of them dedicated to Lawrence County?
No.
So it's crossover?
It's crossover, yeah.
And how many counties do you serve out of that facility?
Well, we, the only one that would be the crossover would be our Bright Start nurse, Katie Klauser, and so we have Bright Start, that's based on the infant mortality rates that we see, and so she has Bright Start clients in Lawrence County and Buick County.
And so the other three people just have Lawrence County clients?
Right, yep.
So you have four people working on this, and three people dedicating full-time to Lawrence County?
You have a community health nurse in Brittany, in Brittany Limmel, you have a registered dietitian in Wendy Roberts, who does have clients because she's a regional, so she will have clients that she has of high-risk WIC clients, that could be in Meet County, could be in Buick County. She's housed in Lawrence County, and then you have the secretary that will, that will get replaced your ASAP, who's spends her time seeing Lawrence County clients.
So why aren't you fully funded by the state?
I don't know, I get, it's, good question, you know what I mean, it's been, this has been the piece that's been a cooperative and a, and a contractual agreement between the Department of Health and nearly all counties for a very, very long time. Now, of course, not all counties participate.
Yeah, and this year of the big three, this one is funded at a hundred percent with a five percent increase from the state level, so you've got more money this year.
Right, I'm, I'm assuming that the contract that came to you guys, did it have a five or a seven percent increase boost, do you remember?
Joel is asking for.
I'm guessing it's a seven percent, based on, based on Nicola and what the governor had given state employees was a seven percent. And so that has been typically what's been followed across, and it's, I mean, it's not unique to Lawrence County, it's the same every county. Perkins County, Meet County, all of them, but it's seen a seven percent increase in their, in their cost.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, I think the statute that right in the file is thirty two, thirty twenty-one, and it looks like it's permissive, so county commissioners are hereby authorized to arrange by contractual agreements, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so I guess that suggests it's not a requirement, but.
So, so final question, if we didn't fund this, would you still exist?
We do in other counties.
That's my point.
Sometimes not in the same capacity.
I understand.
You know, as, as far as, you know, like in Rapid City, for example, we don't do any of the car stuff down there. I don't, I, I can't answer whether we would if it came, push came to shove, you know. I can tell you that things are being examined at these contract levels because there has been, you know, recognized some inequalities depending on, you know, long-term employees, for example, you know, it's one thing, it's one thing for a county to have a relatively new employee where they may be paying fourteen fifty an hour for that employee's wage, where we have another one who's been around for twenty-seven years and are getting twenty-three fifty, but the reimbursement rate is exactly the same, based on a per participant.
Is, is our county nurse an RN or LPN?
RN. RN.
Okay, further questions for Mr. Hines? All right. Thank you, sir. Yes, thank you. That's very informative.
You guys can get ahold of me anytime.
All right.
All right.
Well, hopefully they don't make their decision until they have a public hearing in September. So we just beat each other up today.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and you guys got any questions you want, any more explanation or?
He's published.
All right.
Thank you. Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Dean, I think you're in, you're in the pen.
So Randy, which number do we want to start out with? That's right. That's my point. Roger.
You're a man. Security, weren't you, huh?
Yeah, I did a thing. In the hard times, you know, like last year or about a decade ago. Randy, so you know, I'm gonna pick. That's all right. Now they got a lot of extra money in the state and that's why we look for a raise. One state was funded this hundred percent. They don't tell us all.
No, none of it.
Yeah, but that's right. Yeah, yeah.
Whenever you're ready.
All right. Like normally, you gotta stick on that.
I have, uh, we're shelling stuff. We worked hard to try to pare down our presentation. In the interest of time, uh, there's some rather oddly complicated things in this year's budget, but I, but I think we can present them in a way, uh, in a way that's quite easy to understand.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Two ten.
Two ten? Are you gonna go through them all that you do?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Joe. So we're gonna skip these first three. Uh, I keep these in there every year, but that's more for our new commissioners. Everybody here knows what I'm talking about. If I talk about a category one expense, which is salary, which is virtues, or one comparison, the, the core items in category two and category three. Slide six. Or seven.
All right, you too.
So one hundred and three thousand, three ninety up from last year's eighty-three. Represents an increase of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and forty. This year's increase primarily due to thirty-seven thousand, three oh four eighty-two budgeted for moving costs to the new facility. Even with the added expense of moving, we're well below the one hundred and sixteen thousand, five from two thousand and nine. You heard me give these presentations enough to know that I always like to present the history because I think it, it frames it rather well, uh, with respect to what we try to do every day. Budget is just not one time a year on the sheriff's office. We budget every single day, uh, capacity, reviewing the exercise. So we'll talk a little bit about, uh, the moving expenses themselves. There's three quotes which were offered by Western Communication. Quotes were designated as cables labor, that tennis, uh, cables and labor. Labor and mileage, uh, are also figured in there. The sum total for the three quotes is fifty-five thousand, twenty-three. However, uh, eighteen thousand, five nineteen can be paid out of Department two-two-five, making the total for two-ten, thirty-seven, three oh four eighty-two. This is where it starts to get a little complicated. The bottom line is this, um, there are some, there, there's an amount of money in a couple of different categories that is either moving or for the upgrading of our communication systems. Some of that money can come, uh, out of two-ten. Some of that money has been approved to come out of two-two-five. Some of that money, we applied for grants from Homeland Security. Um, and we've got this little issue with the Homeland Security grant that we'll talk about just a little bit. So also showing an increase, uh, is our SDN service line. Uh, SDN is our PSAP's connection to the state. Carries a cost of two hundred and sixty dollars a month or thirty-one hundred, uh, per year. SDN expenses, uh, quoted to Greg at twenty-one thousand, the state agreed to pay for half. Lawrence County share is ten thousand, five hundred. So I make mention of that to emphasize that we literally are looking for every avenue, uh, to try to save the county money, every penny we can. Excellent. All right, so this is kind of the big one. Lawrence County's, uh, radio systems require replacement of seven radio repeaters. Our towers have got to be updated. This was, uh, the lion's share of what, what Dave did for us on his study. You heard Dave speak earlier today. The total cost for the project, uh, for these seven repeaters, they're twenty-two thousand, seven nineteen each, for a total of one fifty-nine, thirty-three. Sheriff's Office received a grant from Homeland Security to pay for four of the repeaters. However, between the time that the grant was awarded and now the cost for repeaters increased, leaving a deficit of seventy-three sixty. So Homeland Security will pay for eighty-three thousand, five sevens, five sixteen. That's their maximum amount. The remaining project costs are sixty-eight thousand, one fifty-seven. Plus the seventy-three sixty brings a short, uh, shortfall of seventy-five, five seventeen. State Board has approved the use of nine-one-one funds to pay for twenty-five percent of those costs not covered by the HLS grant for eighteen thousand, eight seventy-nine, twenty-five. Therefore, here's kind of your synopsis, you can skip to the next one, Charlie. And the next one, yeah. There we go. So this is how it lines out for the new radio system. Homeland Security, eighty-three thousand, five sixteen, that comes out of Department two-ten. Lawrence County lots of big fifty-six thousand, six thirty-seven, seventy-five, also out of two-ten. That makes the two-ten total one forty, one fifty-three, seventy-five. Uh, nine-one-one funds can pay eighteen thousand, eight seventy-nine, twenty-five. That'll come out of two-two-five. And I built in a variable or a margin of two-point-seven-four and that's what brings our total cost to one fifty-nine, thirty-three. So at every junction, we try to find a way to save money. Yes?
Will we be spending any of this money this year? Some of these improvements?
No. Um, the Homeland Security money, that becomes, it's, it's different. We have to spend it first and then we get reimbursed for it. So there are times when you're spending it one year and you're getting reimbursed later, but that shouldn't happen. That's what we have for two-ten. Uh, this shows category two for two-ten. Once again, let's just look at the history. Even with what we're doing, it's at one oh three, three ninety compared to the two thousand and nine total of one sixteen, five hundred. So I also like to show this, when we have a need, our costs go up. I explain it to you. We do what we need to do. The very next year, those costs go way, way back down. So we're not for what we needed to do this year. I would anticipate it would have been the high sixties or low sevens. That's where we're at. Two eleven.
On the dispatch part there, if I might.
Yeah.
Uh, it says dispatch supply. Is that it? That's fifty thousand more. Is that all, uh, electronic stuff and that or?
Dispatch supplies.
And the way I read it, it was about fifty thousand more than last quarter year.
Yep. So that would be, uh, there are.
I, I forget to look back at that one page. I got this one. Who's gonna like get back to that?
Yeah, and he brought some of those up.
So, uh, we can take this one piece at a time. So, uh, within dispatch supply, there are, uh, twelve categories. So the Motorola maintenance contract, that is, uh, that went down. We have it spent at fourteen, anticipating ten. Teletype fees is exactly the same. Computer equipment, uh, last year was thirty-seven, this year went up to forty-five. That was in part, uh, the, uh, the moving costs for going up. IBM contract is exactly the same. Voice products went up as their fees went up, um, by about, it's like just over about twelve hundred bucks. Training is the same. The Gen Pro pro- contracted the same. SDN, um, that's the Ethernet service that we talked about, that, that went up. Other items stay the same with the exception of, uh, a general or miscellaneous. And that went from nineteen fifty to twenty-six hundred. So those were your raises.
Thank you.
Any other questions on? Moving to two-eleven. The fourteen line items in this section, four line items were raised and the balance remained at the two-twenty-three amount. Sheriff's supply was increased to cover the costs of twenty-four thousand, six hundred associated with storage and moving expenses of our free furniture. So it's about ninety-six hundred dollars to store it. It's about fifteen thousand to move it from storage up to the facility. Uh, were it not for the moving expenses, the requested amount would be twenty-seven, six sixty-eight or four thousand, one hundred and thirty-three over last year. And that expense, that four thousand, one thirty-three, that's purely, uh, inflation. So, so things are getting to be more expensive.
Are you, are you expecting a supplementary budget twenty-three on that?
I'm sorry?
On twenty-three, we spent twenty thousand of a twenty-three thousand dollar budget. We're gonna have to supplement that.
Uh, to bring that.
I don't need to know today.
Do you mind shift supplies?
Yeah. Yeah. Just something that.
Some of that, some of that money is the storage of the furniture. It's anticipated spend.
So I don't know how it crosses over into next year.
Right. But the way that really pencils out for us is it came at a point in time that was early enough in our budget that we're trying to hard, trying hard to make adjustments so that we don't have to have a subsidy. We really work hard not to get subsidies. Sheriff's supply was increased, we talked about that, so she was storage, uh.
Travel was.
Sheriff's travel was raised and that's about purely fuel costs.
The grant.
Trying to anticipate fuel is throwing a dart with a blindfold. Sometimes it goes up, you're a little short, sometimes it goes down and you're a little long. I'm just doing the best that I can. Capital assets, uh, it's my request to add to our inventory an additional, um, spare vehicle for use of the deputies. Now, where this really comes in is transports. We're doing more of our transports now than we have in the past. And the reason for that is, uh, specifically, Pennington County, in order to make their system work, uh, we have to have our inmates, uh, to their facility by four-thirty in the morning. And that means the deputy's gotta get up at two o'clock in the morning to get somebody down there. Sometimes it just makes better business sense to put somebody in a car at ten o'clock in the morning and have them drive the soup balls in back. We were spending about fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars annually to have Pennington County transport inmates for us. There are times when that's, uh, the fiscally responsible way to do it. There are times when it's not. And so, uh, when you have a fleet of vehicles, as we do, it's not uncommon that we have a vehicle that's in getting some work done. I could use an extra spare vehicle. We have one now I could use to, in transports and when vehicles are down. Now, that having been said, uh, other department heads approached me and, um, asked me to put something in our budget. And so I have other department heads such as the Public Defender's Office, the State Attorney and the Computer Department, all of whom will have need to travel to the new facility. A solution for the board to consider, and I believe the cheapest way to accomplish that need, would be to retain vehicles that our office would normally trade in. We get somewhere in the neighborhood between seven and ten thousand dollars for those vehicles. They are not up to the standard, uh, of an emergency vehicle, but they've got, in some cases, years of life left in them that they can drive back and forth. So if you're looking for vehicles, uh, this would be, in my opinion, a very fiscally wise way to capture, uh, free vehicles for use for the county. Therefore, I've requested a purchase of four vehicles, our normal annual request. And that at an estimated cost of fifty-two thousand, five hundred each for a total of two hundred and ten thousand.
Player right there, uh, your ammunition cost. Ammunition costing you more or are you practicing more or what's the reason?
Ammunition costs, uh, we did not raise. They have been the same budgeted-wise. They've been the same since two thousand and twenty-two. There are years where we spend more. I don't have the spent sheet, but I've been just friend for that. But, um, I have a complete breakdown on what those costs are anticipated. And that's why they hold right where they are.
Well, I, I got, uh, eleven thousand, five hundred and some. And then back in twenty-one, it was five thousand and some. That's six thousand increase on my book there.
Right. So ammunition is not exclusive to ammunition. That's just what we've labeled the line item. It also counts firearms. And if you recall, we went through a process where, where, we're still in that process where periodically we upgrade firearms and that also comes out of it. And that process started in twenty-two. So that's why. Any other questions on two-eleven?
Do all the officers carry a county on the firearm?
They do now, yes. Two-twelve. Okay. The rise in pay, or what, what we would reference as category one. Rise in pay represents costs associated with moving one full-time employee from two-eleven to two-twelve. We're not adding county FTE or full-time employee, I'm just shifting them from one department to the other. The reason is historically, uh, we paid for the position that handles the, uh, twenty-four-seven program out of two-eleven. I wanna move that over to two-twelve in the year that we're moving into the new facility so that, uh, when we are trying to get our literal, uh, costs to running the, run the jail and those programs associated with the jail, it's much more streamlined to try to capture those costs. And in addition to that, uh, we have requested, uh, via an addition of a full-time employee by way of a nurse. And this I would offer as an RN. So in explanation, I think that's the next slide. Lawrence County's revenue from housing federal inmates is based off a formula. It's a formula that is, uh, held, held very close to the chest or the heart of those folks in Washington DC, which assigns what you're going to earn. Uh, nobody really knows what the formula is and they're pretty closed off and trying to get too much information. But we do know from, uh, talking to people, what some of those contributing factors are. For example, we do know that there are three, at least, elements that contribute to how much the federal government is gonna give you per day to house an inmate. And those would, those three would be services provided, care offered, in-jail accreditation. I intend to capture all three of these, but it's gonna take us a couple of years to do it. So to get our jail credited is a process that will start once we get into the new facility. It takes about two years to get to that point, but it will help us realize greater revenue from the federal government in housing federal inmates. The most obvious one that we can, we can try to go after today would be nurse, the care of the inmates that are in the facility. try to go after today would be nurse, the care of the inmates that are in the facility. So, uh, let's look at what some of those numbers are. Next slide. These are real numbers. These are numbers that, that, as you know, uh, a couple of years ago, I came to the board and I let you know that we needed to become proficient at managing this process of housing federal inmates before we jump into it, and all of a sudden we've got hopefully forty at minimum. So you can see that the money is real, the money is there, uh, and we have earned, since we started the program, a, a revenue stream for Lawrence County of a hundred and ten thousand three hundred and twenty bucks. And this is only with very limited space. We only house what we can, uh, given the cap that we, that exists with our new facility. Next slide. This is what our contract reads. Our contract says seventy dollars per day per inmate. So it's basic math. If we house forty inmates over the course of a year, it brings a revenue stream of a million twenty-two thousand. Next slide. So this just gives you some figures to compare by. If we can get our, our, uh, allotment increased, it just means more money. Very simple. If it goes from seventy to eighty-five, uh, the difference is two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars a year. This is just business. It's not poke and dagger. It's not skeletons in the closet. This is the way it works. If we can get it up to a hundred and twelve, the difference is, uh, three hundred and ninety-four thousand. Next slide. So let's, uh, take a break from the, the numbers and just talk about the need. I wouldn't do this just to generate money. There has to be a need in the facility, for my conscience to be clear, to, to try to capture some more money. The need is exactly this. Right now in our facility, there is, I will say. There's an opportunity in South Dakota state law which enables us to not have a nurse dispense medication. And a lot of people that are in a jail need medication. So our jail staff, folks no different than me, are, are legally performing responsibilities that are in every other venue assigned to a registered nurse. This means there's liability. At forty inmates, it is considerable effort for a, a staff member of ours to distribute medication. If we're up to a hundred and forty, you can see it compounds it by a factor of at least three. So there is a literal need to have a nurse. That having been said, it has been, in my opinion, cost prohibitive historically to try to have a full-time nurse, uh, in our facility. There's the need. Where's the reality? There are facilities in our state that are, uh, above a hundred and ten dollars a day in federal, uh, reimbursement to house federal inmates. So I'm compelled, as your sheriff, you might do diligence and try to figure out why they're getting more money than we are. And this is one of the reasons. So what do we need in order to, to at least break even? That's kinda what we're looking at. So in order to get in our end, to work full-time in our facility, we'd have to pay, in my estimate, about a comparable amount with the loo- what we're paying a deputy sheriff lieutenant, which is about a hundred and nine thousand five hundred and eight with benefits per year. So what do we actually need? We need to go from seventy dollars per day to, um, what's my figure? So an increase of seven dollars and fifty-one cents. Can we do it? I think we can absolutely do it. I think I, in fact, I think we will surpass it. Can I guarantee it? No.
Then these would also be the blood draws and stuff that we're gonna be paying an outside nurse to do currently?
So there, there are ancillary, uh, benefits to it as well, where there, we've got a contract with some folks, uh, come down and do nurses call. Uh, so if we had a nurse on staff, they could do that during the daytime. You're absolutely right. They could do blood draws. There's other benefits that come to us, uh, by having a nurse on staff full-time.
The state increased their reimbursement fee as of July one.
The state did, correct.
Do we, do we have an influx of funds created by that?
Uh, no, we don't. Not typically. Um, there's a possibility that we could capture some of that, um, once we're in the new facility, but we're in competition then with other jails.
So it's, but it went to a hundred and four or ninety-four, a hundred and four, right?
Yeah, somewhere in there.
So, and, and so that amount compared to what we're trying to achieve at seventy-seven gives us some kind of scale.
Right. Yeah. So you might be one, I'm sorry.
And then, and then I understand that Penny County is in dri- dire straits, and they're gonna start giving up federal prisoners because they don't have room.
Right.
So there's more probability on the federal side than the state side. Is that right?
I feel very confident that it is not an over-exaggeration that we will be solid at forty. I've had, uh, meetings with our state marshal and his chief deputy. Um, I feel very confident that we are just where we need to be. Now, you might be asking, why? Why are we doing this this year? Because we still have, uh, potentially eight, nine months into next year before we move into the new facility. Well, here's why. Our contract with the federal government is by no, um, happenstance up in September, which you might have heard me say before. I don't wanna push our move-in date beyond September, because September is when we're renegotiating that contract, and I wanna be in the new facility when we renegotiate, so we can try to capture some of these funds. And when we make those applications, we need to have some, in my opinion, we need to have somebody on staff up and running to fill that documentation out to say we offer these services. That's why it's important to do it now.
Appreciate a question.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I was at, uh, the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance meeting about a week and a half ago, and they were discussing liability claims at a, a jail, particular jail in South Dakota, and were discussing an inmate that came in under the influence of methamphetamine and ended up dying in, in the facility. And I don't know if that county's been sued yet, and, uh, but anyway, the takeaway is, is, is having a healthcare person on staff full-time could be potentially very beneficial to help me to avoid situations like that, to identify them, and to react more quickly, I think. And so that would be another benefit as well.
Will it have an impact on our insurance?
I don't, I don't, not, not, not at this point, not necessarily. I can envision though, I'm speculating, that at some point that there might be some guidance out on that, that that might be something that I don't know if they're gonna require, but I think it's probably gonna be something sooner or later that's encouraged.
Uh, so that's really the case for that addition. Uh, any, any questions in that regard before we move on?
The FTE, can, can that one person cover the shifts you need covered as a nurse?
There, there's no choice about it. Uh, um, it's a good question. Uh, they're limited to forty hours, in a work week. That's all we can cover.
So you're gonna be doing some of this with non-RNs at different times?
We just won't have twenty-four hour coverage. Uh, jail supply and uniform was raised to cover costs associated with the purchase of Corrections EMR, electronic health records system. Uh, same mindset. And just to put it in a nutshell, there's a program out there that will help a potential nurse track what medications goes to what inmate. And, uh, that becomes vital as well. And the cost of that program is twenty-three thousand six hundred dollars. It comes, is highly recommended by other facilities in the state of South Dakota that we trust.
Is that an annual fee?
That is a, that is a purchase fee, and then there's a.
Annual maintenance. Okay, thank you.
Jail Board of Prisoners, there was a big increase, uh, there. We are on pace to fall short this year. I have briefed the board on that previously. I will tell you that, uh, I, I trust that sport knows how hard, uh, my staff and I have worked over a long period of time to keep those costs down. In May alone, we paid nearly ten thousand dollars to feed our inmates. Uh, food costs, Shelley actually does the, uh, monitors the ordering of the food, and food costs are just soaring. We see it in our personal lives. It's no different than our jail. Um, so it's very simple math. I tried to be a little on the conservative side. I calculated out what our monthly fee is. I started off moving into our new facility and added that amount to the cost. That, that's worth it. Um, it is my intent, uh, to, uh, I, I guess just to put it bluntly, I intend to fill the jail. Uh, if we move in on a Monday, I intend to fill it by Tuesday. Uh, we wanna plan it just that strictly. Um, because I want to get those revenue streams rolling as fast as we can. That's what I have for two twelve. Uh, we look at jail budgeted equipment. Uh, this is a, I think, a, uh, reflection of the hard work of a great number of people. Um, there's quite a significant difference in what we have today when compared to times past. And now two-two-five. So again, uh, some of these figures, um, I, I have to tell the board are not as solid as what you would traditionally hear from me. Part of the reason is, if you look at the bottom bullet point there, uh, Lumen Systems, uh, I still do not know if they won the state bid. If they won the state bid, it's possible that that thirty-one thousand is lower. Uh, but I don't know what to tell you. Uh, all I can do at this particular point of the year is budget for what I think it's gonna cost. And that's as accurate a number as I can produce. There's, uh, three other numbers up there that are, uh, we're, we're still waiting for final approval, uh, from the, the nine-one-one board. Their, their, uh, written information suggests that we can take this money, uh, the antennas, cables, connectors, that's, um, costs associated with moving to the new, the new building. There, uh, as I said, their written information says we can take that out of two-two-five. We're waiting for confirmation. Worst-case scenario, we can't take, uh, the seven thousand sixty, the eighteen-five, or the, the ten thousand out of two-two-five. The numbers won't change. I'll just have to take them out of two. We're, we're waiting for final approval. So this way.
Will we have these answers by the time we adopt our final budget?
Certainly. That's in October, correct?
Yeah.
It'll be a second meeting in September.
Yeah. Any questions on two-two-five? Everything else is really staying fairly stable.
I have one question.
Okay.
On your supplies there, that's an increase, eighty thousand or so. Have you got some things that, uh, bought that, uh, aren't here yet?
So these are the numbers that are reflected above there that you're talking about in supply. So in supply, there are a number of different categories, and the one that, there's only two that were raised. Repairs and maintenance went up from five thousand to six thousand, and then computer equipment and monitors went from sixty-four thousand to eighty-five thousand. That's part of what's represented.
Okay. Thank you.
So if no more questions on two-two-five, then, uh, with our chairman's, uh, indulgence, I would just offer a couple of thoughts.
Yeah.
I've been with the, the county for, I'm in my thirtieth year. In, in that amount of time, our very conservative department heads have never asked for a ten percent raise. And, uh, I would, I know the board has already considered these things, but I think it merits, um, my highlighting a couple. There was a, a couple of years ago during COVID where we took what we believed to be the high road. There was a lot of people that were losing their jobs, and we asked for no raise whatsoever on that basis. At that same time, other, our competitors, if you will, our sister agencies, the other governmental entities that are around us, chose a different path. And those folks got a raise, many of them, and we chose for nothing. The subsequent years, we again tried to be conservative, and while other folks got higher than what we asked for, we felt confident that it was the right thing to do. All we're asking for is to catch up. We do not compare ourselves in those meetings, uh, with a particular governmental entity within our county that is very high-paid. We do not do that. Uh, but we do feel strongly that we have to be competitive with those in our category. In my opinion, I, I'm not speaking for anybody else, but I do have more employees than any other county, uh, department. And it is getting very difficult to compete with those that we compete against. And I will, and I will offer a word that I feel strongly about. We are in critical mass in trying to get, uh, the same level of employees that we have historically got. And part of the issue is we're not as competitive as with what we once were. So I ask you to please give serious consideration to what the board, or I'm sorry, what your department is contemplated quite seriously. That's what I have.
Ready? Question, if I may, on the, on the wage part of it. In your opinion, in your department, is the ten percent increase more important or less important than the healthcare change?
Well, that's a very tough question. I think it's a very fair question. I would say that, uh, my opinion is they kinda go hand in hand, because, uh, our wages are not as competitive as they once were, and neither are our benefits. If I believe it came down to one or the other, I would say the wage is more important. Thank you.
You had a, a gentleman that just, uh, quit and moved, uh, to the sheriff's department in Penny County last time. Sound right?
Where'd you go? Did you go to city? You had one that left for another position, didn't you?
He just left and he told, said in the deal here that he went to Rapid City, uh, it was public defender, prison capacity.
That was a public defender.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That letter we had today in our packet, said it.
But, yeah, it was in the back. Yeah.
Yeah, it was a public defender.
Was it?
Yeah. That went to that, uh, yeah, it was in the public defender office. It wasn't, it wasn't law enforcement. It was in the.
I must have not.
I, I can.
It is correct.
I can tell you this, that there's two schools of thoughts that I personally wrestle. You cannot pay people enough money to work at a bad organization. That, that's all there is to it. You can offer them all kinds of money, but if it's not a good place to work, they're not gonna go there. Um, what we're really talking about is we need to retain our institutional knowledge. Um, I, I, I have no intent whatsoever to be, uh, critical towards any other governmental entity, but we can see what happens in an emergency when you lose your institutional knowledge. And so there's a tremendous value that exists in Lawrence County that we need to protect, and that value is the tenure of those that are in leadership positions within our county. And the second component then is we need to be able to draw competitively, uh, when in com- in a literal competition with those right next door, we have to be able to have offerings that are at least people, and give people the opportunity to choose to work at what we believe is the best organization. That's what I have.
And a lot of people figure, feel that way. If you gotta go to the organization to work for it, like, that probably takes pressure over a lot of other things.
I agree. But, but I see it, and I think what I can offer, uh, at a scale that is not, um, seen everywhere else in the county because of the numbers that we employ, our application pool is decreased. And we lose people, uh, very commonly to other agencies, particularly out of our jail. A lot of people see it as a stepping stone, uh, for their law enforcement career, and we're not retaining them the length of time that we once did, in my opinion, because opportunities are good elsewhere. Thank you for your time.
Well, I'll just follow up. You know, the state did a seven percent increase for state.
Yes. They did what?
Seven percent. And, and the year of COVID, they did an increase that our county. And, and the year of COVID, they did an increase that our county stay up with. So that explains, that's one of our big competitors, I would think, in John's department. As well as people look at going to work for the DOT or the county. And, uh, when the shops are in a certain geographical position, it's not a big change for their life to, to work for the DOT shop in Bell or work for us in Spearfish. So there is some real competition there.
Okay, any further questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Joey. Mr. Bay, you're in the barrel next, buddy.
Yeah, I wish I had a little better presentation, this is pretty nice.
Yeah, it's easier, it's easier to follow a lousy one, right?
No, you should have put it first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we back online?
Yes.
Window screen. Just curious, thought maybe John had his forty-four page PowerPoint he was going to put.
I do not have any PowerPoint. I wish I did, though, I, I should have spent a little more time on this. Maybe next time, maybe there will be a next time.
Is that a threat?
No, no, I'm, I'm hoping.
You're doing a good job.
Slaves have to be sold.
Three one four.
Three one four.
I'm missing that one.
The building's in ground. One says one.
Well, I found him.
That's Tim's apartment. Three one four is highway.
But by statute, Tim works for John.
I have some, a little bit of stuff here for Tim if, that he, uh, he left with me on that equipment stuff solely. If there's any questions about that, I do have a little information for Tim.
We would rather see Tim's.
Right, I would too.
Did you have a loader lift a tractor?
What do you want to do? You're going to do one six one.
There's, there's really one question, is there a track hoe in your budget?
There is not.
Then you're probably okay.
Right, then you're done.
See you guys next year, huh?
Oh, that's good. We're going to Tim's? Is that what you just said? One sixty one, the boss says.
Well, why are we going there? Better highlight guy here.
Well.
I realize you're over this.
No, that's fine, and, and as far as, I don't have a lot of Tim's stuff here, but I do have his equipment in it. And I don't know if he's in, I think a little of this fell under the sheriff's department as well. You know, for this new building and the new, I guess, the new, uh, liabilities that are going to come with that building as far as, uh, keeping that area cleaned out of, for snow removal. We, we did get some information on a loader and a, and a snow pusher for that, for that new, uh, so that's two hundred and eighty-four thousand. It was two hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. But that, he put, Tim put on a, an additional, I think, five percent. That was, you know, at, at the request of Butler, if, if we don't get these things ordered. So there's, there's a possibility they warned us of a three percent increase by the end of the year, we opted to add the five percent.
I really only have one question on that new facility for the snow removal, et cetera. Has anybody spoke to the city about them maintaining the city roof?
Yes, Tim has spoke to them, and I believe the sheriff was also in contact.
I was there with that. Cause really, you can do it two ways, they can remove the snow or pay us to do it.
Well, and I guess here's our thought on this whole deal, it's a twenty-four seven facility. And, you know, even at the city or, and we'll do, the county will do whatever we can do to, to clean, but, you know, in the middle of a blizzard in the middle of the night, we might not be able to get there for an hour, two hours, or who knows? And if that's a, if that's an emergency situation, maybe to get an ambulance or a fire engine or anything like that to that facility, I think it would be a benefit to have a piece of equipment there that, that people that are on site know how to run, you know, that are trained to run it. So they could at least get a path out of there. That, that, that facility has got some pretty, snow in pretty quickly that we clean out for them when, you know, during blizzards. But once they're open full time, that might not work.
It's wise to have something out there.
And, and I agree, but I, I'm looking at not only the removal, but as, as we go forward and that street needs maintenance, that the, that the city realizes it's theirs. So when it needs surfacing or whatever, they're at the table.
I was present when Tim mentioned it to them, they, they didn't reply, but it's been certainly brought to their attention. But anyway, um, as far as buildings and grounds, I know it has been, I don't believe it's in any budget stuff this year for an extra person there either for, for maintenance, you know, for buildings and grounds. Uh, you know, and I think that would be certainly after the building is built, but that would, um, something we probably need to keep on, on our minds that we are probably going to be, he's got a whole nother building to take, take care of, so. And really, that's all I have for Tim's stuff, you know, that equipment portion and, and the man, an extra person, so. Everything else in his budget, he's already taken care of, and I believe you guys have that. I don't think he added anything outside of normal, normal stuff. Anyway. Before I get to our equipment deal, I would like to go over our wage, uh, increases there, I got, I got, uh, three people on, I should, four people that we have proposed giving step raises to in twenty-four. And, uh, three people actually are step raises and one is our office administrator, she was, she was kind of overlooked in a, in a, in a, I guess, when everybody else got raises, she, she didn't, and we had to, we had to hurry up and move her up to administrative three just so she wasn't making less money than our, our secretary one, so, or secretary three, I'm sorry. Uh, we have already proposed here, and the reason being for, for just that case, I mean, if she was to retire, we, and we hire a new person, she's going to be mainly making just a few cents more than our, our administrative secretary. So I've already spoke with our administrative secretary about moving up. You know, when our administrator retires and her interest level isn't, isn't, isn't there, she, she doesn't really want to do that work, but she certainly doesn't want to do it for only the twenty-some cents an hour or more. So we're asking to raise our administrative assistant to align her with the, uh, with the, uh, I guess it's the state's attorney and public defender's, the legal assistance. Um, I think that when you, if you look at that one paper there, I think you got with our wages on it, where Diane has been increased to that wage as a, as a, the base wage. And then the other three are, are, we have three individuals that have been here for fifteen years, seventeen years, and twenty-four years. And, and we just started our, our scale system, and those are the three that we're hoping to give, uh, to give step raises to in twenty-four. And I think our auditor has all of those highlighted in, in, in the, uh, it's in the budgeted part of our, our wage scale. Now, when it comes to our, our work that we're going to do this year in our proposed five-year plan, I know you guys had asked for budget cuts, and, you know, I got to tell you, I did, I, I did the best I could with what was on the list of things to do as far as roads that need to be repaved. There's probably a little room to work here, and of course, at your discretion, there could be a lot of room to work here, I guess. You know, I, I don't want to stop on the Nemo project, okay? I, I, we've already got a, a pretty good investment into that, and I, I think we need to see that through. So right on the top of our list, you know, that being one of our, our li- our largest project outside of the bridge would be that one five million, one point five five million dollars. And that is actually slightly lower than the, uh, the year.
This is, this is, like, go to the back of your, of three fourteen, just of the three fourteen.
Of that section.
Of that section, and these are, these are in that top part of it. There you go.
I'm going to give you a breakdown of this before we go to the next page, cause that, it, it's not everything in this is reflected in this.
So what we're talking about is that, on this sheet is a two point seven and pa- million in paving projects, and then the six hundred and seventy-five thousand in gravel projects, you're going to go over that one two five.
Correct, that is correct. Um, but anyways, the one point five five million is slightly less than the original estimate based on this year's, uh, costs. And I added fifteen percent. So hopefully, that's enough to cover the bid for next year. I believe it will be, I did talk with a couple of different contractors and an engineer that everybody thought a fifteen percent increase is plenty. So that's what I did, I took this year's cost, broke it out, you know, divided by the miles, came up with a per mile cost, added fifteen percent, and then applied the new mileage for next year's project. I did similar on the next three asphalt projects, which is, is our Truck City Road, that one mile outside of Whitewood, uh, the Mineral Place and Oliver, uh, and the Winterville. Those are all three roads that we, I applied the same number to those roads. I believe that those roads will come in less because I don't think we're going to need to do as thick of a overlay on those three roads. None of those roads really carry the, the excessive truck traffic. So I do believe those three roads, we can come in under on this, these estimates.
We heard today that the DOT was going to add a turning lane at Cook City and Highway.
Yep.
Back and match you at some, want to be careful not to be tearing out new asphalt.
This is on the, a mile on the other.
Or on the other end of the way.
This is a, this is a section of road that we, that we, uh, we have already done a, a digouts, repairs, and we did a chip seal in advance of doing this pavement project, because the asphalt there was getting pretty bad shape. So we fixed all of the horrible areas to get it ready for this job. It has since been pushed back two years now.
So that's the one coming from Whitewood out.
From Whitewood out, one mile out from the city. So, uh, worse come to worse, I mean, if we could move that back another year. But, uh, I mean, we're, we're, we're living on borrowed time on that road because it's already, we did the repairs in preparation for this project. Uh, the other one is our West Oliver and Mineral Place. We already did East Oliver and West Oliver and Mineral Place, those, that little stretch of asphalt, the, the traffic count is getting quite a bit on that. That, that road's getting pretty tough shape. So to try to preserve what we have there, um, I think it's still in a condition that we can, at this time, still do a mill and overlay. I think if we keep pushing that one back, we're going to end up with a full depth reclamation, which will double the price.
At that corner where Oliver turns into Mineral Place, I think that's going to take a little special attention.
That and on the north end of Mineral, there's going to be a digout area there as well.
Right by the intersection.
That's right.
Cause there's water that goes under the road there, I think.
Yeah. But I do believe if we push these back much longer, then it, the whole road will become a full.
That one's coming, that one's coming apart pretty fast.
It is. So my hope is that we're, we're still in the, in the, uh, the timeframe where we can just do a mill and overlay with some, some small digout repairs.
It's, it's breaking up at the edges.
And then, of course, Winterville, I know that's an area where we're always concerned about who should be in charge of that road, but at this time, we are in charge of that road, and it's the same condition. It's got one area, it would be on the, I guess it's the south side of the bridge, southeast side of the bridge, that there will be one area there that needs dug out and repaired. But again, I think we're to the point where if we, if we could tackle that one now, I do believe that we can do it with just a mill and overlay with just some repair. But if we wait much longer, we're going to be in the same boat with that road. Yeah, the only thing being, if we waited, I guess, if we're going to wait for the city to take it over, and, you know, that's the only other. They're not going to want to take it over in tough shape.
So, but they will put the trail system.
We'll find right away with that.
Yes. You know, and that road, it's surrounded by city, but it's still, it still shows.
Well, it services Mount Plain, which is county. Yeah. Plains, Mount Plains Two is all county.
So, you know, those are our mill, those are our mill and overlay jobs.